Last, last chance to sign in. Anybody else want to sign in to speak? What say Sheriff?
Sheriff, for you.
But this very first time.
Let me get out of here. Six twelve? Six twelve?
Yeah.
All right, this time, I want to welcome our Lieutenant Governor Randy Whitnall to come up, as long as our Representative Representative Laura Russell come up. And they've got a little presentation that speaks tons as far as what our county employees are capable of and the work they put in every day and the work that they do.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We were pleased to receive this from Jason Mumpower. And it's a proclamation that is telling about the clean audit. And I think this is the sixth out of seven.
Sixth out of seven. We've had one finding in seven years. Yes, sir.
And a clean audit. And it indicates that elected officials have moved to commit committing that government business is on the right track and that all the proper controls are in place and there's no audit findings. And I'll let Representative Russell read the proclamation for you.
Thank you, Randy. I want to thank the people, part of Loudoun County Government for making this clean audit. It goes to show hard work pays off. This certificate is proudly presented to Loudoun County in recognition of its clean financial and compliance audit report for the fiscal year ended in June 30th, 2023. The audit report completed by the Office of Control and Treasury contained zero findings and is an indication of the county's strong system of internal control and exemplary financial reporting in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. Signed, Jason Mumpower. So congratulations, Loudoun County. Job well done.
I was gonna take a picture.
Is this your finance director?
Finance director.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she knows.
You're fine.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
You'll hold this and get it right here between the younger and the younger.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Brother, how you doing?
Thank you, all. I'm ready. We got a lot of value on this day.
Appreciate it, all members.
Thank you.
Goodness, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I like that tea.
Thank you, President.
A tea towel.
Appreciate you taking care of it.
You know, we're doing well.
They are.
Thank you.
All right, this time we will call the public hearing for fiscal year 2425 order. This public hearing is for input on the proposed budget only. Now, although it is restricted, there, of course, we're not going to restrict it because with the discussion and possibility of a new school, we are opening that up as well. But something on the workshop. Talk better in the workshop, please. Speakers are only limited to five minutes. We ask that everyone just be, please be courteous, don't interrupt other speakers. If you can't say it on the radio, we ask that you don't say it here either. So that's all we ask. Everybody's gonna have their opportunity to speak. Just please be respectful and courteous. And Pandora Breland, you're first up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Mayor Buddy, and our county commissioners. Good evening. My name is Pandora Breland. I'm a Loudoun County resident. My comments are regarding $150 million, $15 million school proposals. We need to measure twice and cut once. If these proposed school budgets for $115 million are funded, we will nearly triple our county's school debt. Last Monday, our mayor said we had roughly $40 million of school debt. Up front, let me point out that Lenore City has their own school district that is a separate legal entity governed by their own Board of Ed. They've had their own school district for well over a century. Last Monday, Mr. Garrett told me we have more than 300 Lenore City students in our county district schools. Wow, that's a lot of classroom space in our schools. Do any of our new commissioners know that Loudoun County will not receive any dollars for school construction for those 300-plus students who are in our county district schools? When it comes time to new construction projects, whether it be adding classrooms or building a new school, we must only do new construction to accommodate our county district students, not city district students or totally out-of-county students who've been allowed to enroll in our schools. If our Board of Ed exercised their right to not enroll those 300-plus Lenore City district students next year, we would create space for more than 300 Loudoun County district students and require zero tax dollars to create that space. Certainly, Eaton and North Middle Schools should not be needing any new classrooms if those students are not enrolled next year. Now, on the other hand, should Lenore City not allow all of our K through eight students that are attending their schools, we would see 151 students coming back in from those schools into our schools. If we had to take back into our county all the high school students that we have ongoing to Lenore City High School, that would be 611 students coming back into our schools. And we know we don't have the space for them in our two high schools. That would also leave Lenore City High School with a half-empty high school. So how do you measure twice and cut once? I respectfully recommend the county commission request the Board of Ed provide you with an up-to-date student head count as follows. A head count for each of our schools, including our tech school, showing a number of students and how many of the total students are out of district or out-of-county students. Confirm how many of our county students are going to Lenore City different district schools and in what grades so we can accommodate them in our own schools. The Board of Ed is asking you to rubber stamp and fund with a huge tax increase, a massive $115 million project that includes new square footage for non-county district students and who knows how many out-of-county students. Look at how bad this can get for us. Commissioners, we cannot be jumping up and voluntarily raising our taxes again and again to build and expand our county district schools, especially when there are 800 to 1,000 new students Mr. Garrett expects to materialize due to the 5,000 new building permits issued by Lenore City. Again, we are not responsible for Lenore City district students, and we should not allow this Board of Ed to push our county into taking into, taking on that gigantic financial burden that belongs to Lenore City and has for a century. There is a saying by the author of The Godfather, Mario Fuzzo, "A lawyer with a briefcase can steal more than 100 men with guns." How true that is. Mr. Garrett said the Board of Ed attorney advised him, "We must take Lenore City students" because of Title 49. Well, that's contrary to what the Loudoun County Attorney recently told our county commission chairman, Mr. Cullen. The county attorney said, "There is no Tennessee law that directly prohibits the Loudoun County Board of Ed from refusing to accept students that live within Lenore City." That is an unsettled question of law. In the same letter, an attorney general's opinion supports the conclusion that because local school boards can prescribe residency requirements for enrollment in county schools, the Loudoun County Board of Ed can properly deny Lenore City residents' admission to county schools based on their residency. There is no state law requiring a county school system to enroll students who are residents of a municipality with a separate school system. So our county attorney recommended to Chairman Cullen, "We have the State General Assembly settle this unsettled law." What the General Assembly's answer is will have a massive financial impact to our county. I urge this commission to absolutely take no action to raise our taxes for funding school projects until such time as these two things take place. Number one, the State General Assembly clarifies to you if we must admit Lenore City district students to our schools. And number two, you need to respectfully ask for and receive a new and professionally-prepared, unbiased, school space needs proposal that is designed for our county district students only and the growth anticipated for our county district students only, including for the students we have in Lenore City schools. Thank you for listening to my concern.
Thank you. Thanks, Pandora. Rick Graham.
Can you hold on just one second?
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the ability to talk to everybody and honor guests. I listened to two presentations on the proposed new addition to Philadelphia, the new athletic facilities in Greenback, the proposed new middle and high school. I like Mr. Garrett, and I want to say, starting off, I am not here because I hate children. I actually have a heart for children. I love education, and in fact, my son is a graduate of Loudoun High School. So I have some experience. I think they have great administration. Mr. Garrett is a very fine man. Appreciate his continual honesty. But I listened to these two presentations and came away with more questions and answers. And that's very disconcerting. We asked him about the current student-teacher ratio in Loudoun County schools. He was not aware of what it was. Well, I can tell you from all the information I've dug up, it's about 14.86 students per teacher. That is in the one-third lowest in the state of Tennessee. Then I asked Mr. Garrett about a teacher shortage because he said that there's a serious teacher shortage in Loudoun County. I said, "Well, if there's a teacher shortage at existing schools, how are we going to find enough teachers to staff 55 new classrooms?" He didn't have an answer. He said, "Well, I guess we're gonna have to figure that out." That really concerned me because is it going to increase the operating budget of the school? So that's another question that couldn't be answered. And most importantly, the school voucher program missed passing the legislature last year by one vote. Governor Lee has made this his top priority, and each student will receive $7,000 to go to alternative schools or to homeschool under the current proposal. In Arizona, when this happened in 2022, there were 57,000 school vouchers issued. There are 74,000 this year. So in three years, this program has grown dramatically. There's 873,000 students in Arizona, in the Arizona Public Schools, and enrollment has dropped 8.7% because of the school voucher program. There's absolutely no provision to provide what's gonna happen if school vouchers pass this year and we lose student enrollment in Loudoun County schools. Now, there's many other questions. I only have 45 seconds, but you've heard about two legal opinions that reference the TCA code, which clearly states that the county does not have to accept city students. There's 11 classrooms that are being utilized for optional pre-K classes, and 2006 enrollment levels are about the same as they are today from all the research that I can get. In 2006, there was a study done, and they said, "We don't need another school." So why isn't another study being conducted? That's the big question that we have here. Is it because they're gonna come back and tell us, "Hey, maybe we don't need that school"? And of course, Dr. Barker said there's 200 vacant seats in Lenore City High School.
You skipped out a couple minutes. That jumped ahead.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, Dr. Barker said there were 200 empty seats in Lenore City High School that are available. I, ever since I moved here four years ago, I've heard that this is a 100% conservative-minded, frugal county commission and that you all watch our pennies very, very closely. I urge you to conduct this study. Yes, it's $100,000, but it will satisfy many of the questions that have not been answered and Mr. Garrett has failed to provide answers for. Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. God bless you.
Wendy Lamell? Is that right?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Lamell. I'm a resident of Loudoun County. I'm like Rick, is I want to know why we've not seen a study. Not as granular as you were, but every time I read the Wall Street Journal, I see stories about people going back to work and schools being, becoming empty, places that were expanding no longer expanding. I was, worked for one of the largest construction companies in the world, and I was on a refinery when I saw a large school opened, multimillion-dollar school opened. It was half-empty. It remained empty. And Rick has brought up that possibility here. The people were stuck with the taxes, although in that case, the refineries picked up a bunch. And we don't know. I haven't seen a study looking at the large-scale demographics, the way that the population is shifting back out of small towns like ours. Haven't seen anything that talks about the trend for smaller families, people moving in without families. Haven't seen any of that. And finally, I don't know if there was any truth or no, but we heard that Lenore City was offered a charter school from Hillsdale. And has anything, if that was a possibility, has Loudoun County looked into anything like that to see whether Hillsdale would be interested? They were turned down on Lenore City. Would they be interested in coming here? They have an excellent record for rigorous education. And based on my experience working with communities of a large construction company and trying to get, hire young people and get them trained up in the trades, the people coming, the children coming out of school have two problems. One is ignorance of a lot of basic education, and the other is drug use. And a large and expensive school does nothing for that. What works for that is dedicated teachers. Thank you.
Tim Stevenson? It is Tim, not Jim, right?
It's Jim.
Jim, okay.
Hi. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you for your dedication to schools and children, and that's what it's all about here. I'm new to Loudoun County. Been here a year now, and just a little surprised that I, we attended a presentation over at Teleco. And as you can see, I'm a member of the DFW. I have other friends that are veterans also, and after the presentation, they were like shaking their head like, "Really? You're gonna do this?" And I'm like, you know, I spent, I spent my career working in multi-billion-dollar programs with defense contractors. You know, as a project engineer, doing cost schedule performance, risk analysis, mitigation, all this stuff. And I'm like, I didn't see anything in this presentation that convinced me that this is a necessary expenditure. And I really wish you guys would reconvene and reevaluate what you're doing. And I had a smile, though. You have, you have some nice improvements for athletics. But then I go back and I look at our sons, went to a high school that didn't have a football stadium at all. They had a practice field. And they won state 5.8 championship. Nine of the kids went to Division 1A football scholarships, full rise, and our son made it all the way to the NFL. So, you know, it's doable. You know, they paid to use another stadium for that use. I, I just think you guys are handling it too quickly here. It's almost like you're pushing it through without regard to details. And I expected to see a lot more in your study that justified the need for $115 million. And if you look at a $100,000 study that you guys aren't doing, you multiply that $100,000 study times over 1,050, and that's what you end up with, is $115 million. That's a hell of a lot of money to ask taxpayers to throw out there for you. So all due respect, I'm asking that you just calm it down a little bit, go back, study it more, present it to the people so that we're on board with what you're gonna do before you start taxing us. Thank you.
Deb Stevenson?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Stevenson, and I'm a resident of Loudoun County. Fairly new here, but for, I tend to be, also tend to be a presentation over at Teleco Village. The biggest question in my mind is where's the supporting data? Because as a retired engineer, for over 40 years, I worked large systems for womb to tomb, the design development, the integration and test over different domains such as aerospace and biomedical. And I also ended up teaching at the University of North Florida as an engineering professor. And one of the things I always taught my students was you have to understand the basics of a program, and you have to define the requirements and constraints, and these should be listed. So you have to gather that from your customer. You have to understand your customer enough to list all those requirements and constraints. And then you have to work within the confines of cost, schedule, and risk. Like what if, what if this happens? What if that happens? So you always have it. And for the life cycle of a program means that at any point in time, you may have to redo things, but you have that opportunity. They're called trade studies. So you know how that one change in a requirement will affect cost, schedule, performance, and risk. And the thing that was missing to me on that presentation was all of the above, especially what are the requirements and how do they affect the cost schedule and the risks that weren't really even presented there? So I'm with agreement with what everyone has said prior to this, that you need to go back and spend the time and the effort and make sure that if you're gonna spend money, make, spend good money, not bad money, and make sure that you do it right the first time and then manage it throughout the life cycle of the project. Thank you.
Larry Elder?
My name's Larry Elder. Live over in Teleco Village. Moved here 14 years ago. Moved here because I love the terrain, the mountains, the lakes. I also like the political environment here as opposed to where I came from in Minnesota. And third, I was looking for low taxes. Every one of those reasons I moved here has been met. I used to come to Loudoun County Board meetings back in 2010. I watched how you struggled with the implementation of the school program back there. There were a lot of wants, a lot of things people liked, but when it came down to it, what you did is you really did what was needed. Over the 14 years that I've been here, my taxes have been increased one time. My homeowners fee at Teleco Village has been increased every year for 5%. When I look at what some of the other things when I was coming was you were faced with issue on the county jail. Huge increase. You have a lot of, a lot of people had wants that all the county commissioners sat down and said, "What we're gonna do is what you need." Yeah, they wanted a nice complex. They wanted to have a place for the, for the police cars and the deputies and, and the judges and everything, but what you came back with is you just did what was needed. So maybe I'm a little different than the rest of them. I look and I, and I see issues that you've confronted as far as the growths in Loudoun County. You don't want it to be another Lenore City, and you have voted to put those restrictions in place. Because when you have unwarranted and unregulated growth, you're gonna have a ton of students in the county. So you've done a lot on that. So I am a little different. I, I've watched you take on challenging issues, and you've never done what was wanted. You always came through and voted for what was needed. And I have the complete confidence that you're gonna do the same this time. Thank you.
Mary Jane Alaso? Is that right?
Good job.
All right. Loudoun County Education's paying off.
I'm on both lists. So you want me to speak on the school first or both at the same time?
Well, what's your second subject?
The 2425 budget proposal.
On both?
I want to talk about both, yeah. School and budget.
Let's go here, but these are both public hearings, or for the school. Both of your subjects follow the public hearing.
Okay, thanks. Mary Jane Alaso, I actually, yes, I lived here for a short time, but if you look at my family history records, my ancestors were married in this region in 1800, and my family history sits on Gay Street in Knoxville. So heavily invested in this area emotionally and financially. 30 years of local government experience, tens of billions of dollars in capital projects, either as finance director, administrator, advanced planning, you name it. I've talked to you in workshops about advanced planning. Good job on restricting some of this based on the fact that we don't have the infrastructure. We want it that way. We want the narrow roads. We want the rural atmosphere. But what I'm seeing is the same thing that the other speakers are seeing. We need more work. We need that fiscal impact statement. We need the details behind the demographic assumptions. I know that UT did a little bit of work on population forecasts, but based on my experience and my gut, that number is really, really high for a high school in a community this size. Now, I'm switching to the budget, but before I do, really recommend a unified school district. And I'm sure politically, that's was not even possible, but I had to say it. Two things on the budget. One is, yes, we have record snows, but the way that you deal with that is through a private contract so that you don't kill your people and work on 24/7, you know, for that week-long snowstorm that we're gonna get again eventually. Get the private contractors queued up. They come in, set some budget aside, but it's not gonna kill your folks, okay? Did it all the time in the mountains. Some years, no snow, based on the drought. Some years, record, record inches of snow. So that's one. The other thing is, and I know I'm just talking myself here, but it would really be nice to have a regular, full-time fire department. And I know that was a hand grenade into the politics of this county, but we appreciate the folks who are out there running, calling. politics of this county, but we appreciate the folks who are out there running calls as volunteers. We really, really do. And yet, it's time. We're, we're grownups. And, you know, I don't think you're going to need that, you know, much money for this high school. It's just my gut. So let's have a conversation about the fire department. Thank you.
Jackie Vacchio. Did I say that right? I know it's close.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Vacchio. I am a Loudoun County resident. My question pertains to the curriculum for the new school, so I'm taking that into a slightly different direction. I would like to know if the new school would offer curriculum that educates students on civics, leadership, and the same constitutional Judeo-Christian values as was defined by our founding fathers. I ask this because seldom does one invest 115 million dollars in a project without preparation of and anticipation for the end product. Will the decisions of the new school curriculum sewn today read knowledgeable, wise, and patriotic voters of tomorrow? Thank you.
Tracy Hackman.
My name is Tracy Harris Hackman, and I am a resident of Loudoun County. Since the commission, most of you and the majority of the county has not seen the presentation yet, I wanted to bring up a few things about it and point them out. On the first page, number three, Mr. Guerin gave out a survey to 499 kids at North Middle School, asking if they would rather be bused to Loudoun High School if bus transportation was open, go to Lenore City High School, or go to a new school. First, he has made the statement that he can't bus every student on the north end to Loudoun due to time restrictions. If that is so, then why did he even send this survey out? Number two, why would he ask 499 kids' parents if they would want a new school when it's going to take thousands of us to pay for it? Tonight is the first time the presentation has been given to the county commission and most follow the taxpayers. Just one week away from a vote to raise our taxes, yet he sends out a survey in October of 2021 about this, but nothing else. That's it. Third, he makes the statement about kids who go to Lenore City High School don't have representation on the school board because the city school board oversees the high school. I say I own property in Loudoun City, Lenore City, 5th and 6th District of Loudoun County, and I only get to vote for which one I live in. I have no representation for any other properties I own, and that is just how it is, unfortunately. Student enrollment, Mr. Guerin's numbers do not match the states I have pulled. He is showing less kids in 2020 than the state and 300 plus more on 2021, 22, and 23 than the state has. Since he has not furnished any supporting evidence of his findings, we have not had an assessment done. And there is such a huge difference in numbers, I would like to ask that the commission has an assessment done before another dime is spent. I would also like to point out that in my findings, I have a copy of the 2021 five-year plan that states enrollment not necessarily increasing in 2021. And that's straight from the board's website. I also have a TESA report dated February 2022 that states from pre-pandemic five-year average change in student enrollment, physical year 2016 to 2020, Loudoun County was negative 0.22%. And total enrollment change in the last four years, physical year 2019 to projected physical year of 2023, Loudoun County is negative 2.15%. With all of this information I have, I don't see how we can have, have such an increase in enrollment as he has stated. No matter if you go by his numbers or the ones that the state have, we have less kids now than we did in 2006. So I don't understand why we are talking about spending this amount of money for a school. Number eight, Philly, it's a one-stop shop, 3K through eight. Sticky is not cool. And in 2006's assessment, it shows that it has the functioning capacity of 320 kids, but enrollment for 2023 was only 183 plus or minus. Why are we not sending the kids to Sticky instead of sending, spending almost $10 million to add on? Number 15, projected growth. Mr. Guerin states that the Boyd Center projections show Loudoun County to have the population of 60,507 in 2028, and that we are ahead of schedule. If he would have looked back at the 2006 assessment that was done, he would have seen that they projected Loudoun County's total population for 2020 would be 57,953. And our actual 2020 census showed we had 54,886. So are we either behind or on track? Cost, it states a little over 91 million for a new school building, site development, and athletic fields. On the bottom, you see the charges listed. Nothing is broke down for what is for what project. Why is that? There is also no breakdown of the cost for improvements to Highway 11 in Simpson or the cost to construct the road between them. Why? Where is the traffic study and estimates on operating budget? Why has any of this not been brought up? Why is there no backup plan? I ask these questions and more, but never get any answers from anyone in charge. So I did my own research. In my opinion, most county commissioners, mayor, and all of Board of Education, including Mr. Guerin, has been less than forthcoming of information about this.
Can she finish? Finish.
Blake Moore.
Good afternoon. My name is Blake Moore, and I am a Loudoun County resident for the past 10 years. In 2010, House Speaker Nancy Pelosi famously said, "We have to pass the bill so that you can find out what is in it." At a recent commission meeting, it was stated we needed to spend 115 million dollars for school projects now because if we don't do it, the problem will just get worse. At that same commission meeting, I had several elected officials, if they had seen a copy of this proposal, and none of them had. Therefore, a reasonable person might come to the logical conclusion that there's a correlation between the type of statements by Ms. Pelosi and the massive proposed school projects. Loudoun County Commission has two instances of buying property for approximately double its recent purchase price for the purpose of building a new school. Even in these times of inflated property values, I would propose that these purchases deserve additional scrutiny. Little documentation exists regarding potential other sites for good faith negotiations in either sub case, similar to the missing studies regarding alternatives to other recent real estate purchases by the county. Likewise, in addition to the lack of transparency regarding these new proposed school projects, there is a lack of a paper trail regarding potential alternative education solutions such as eliminating current old enrollment policies, rezoning, building on to existing schools, or increasing student-to-teacher ratios since Loudoun County is below the state average. The aforementioned does not even include a lack of any published quantitative studies regarding if the recently purchased property is the best site for a new school. If they grade at seven through 12 scenario is the best, is in the best interest of students, et cetera. The maturity of a seventh grader versus a 12th grader and placing them in the same learning environment should at least be discussed. When I visit the Loudoun County Schools website and try to find details regarding strategic planning or something regarding these new projects, all I can find is a generalized document under the superintendent's message page from 2021 and the COE drawings from March of this year. Furthermore, the costs mentioned for these projects are very high compared to recent reports that show the average cost to build a new school in Tennessee is approximately $42 million. Why is this alleged plan so much higher? Where is the competitive comparative data? Where is the competitive bid data? Transparency is in short supply right now in this county. I was told recently that there are very few requirements of the county to communicate written plans or actions in an official government forum other than meeting minutes. Even attending meetings in person and attempting to raise concerns puts speakers at risk of ridicule, dismissal, and worse yet, being called a liar without any chance for rebuttal. I have personally been a victim of that type of action by members of this commission, and it should not be tolerated. Let me be clear, I'm not saying the county does not need a new school or several new schools for that matter. The problem is we don't have enough information as informed constituents to validate whether the best decision is being made by our elected officials. I implore every one of you as elected representatives of this community to do the right thing. Listen to your constituents and provide transparency and all detailed options that have been considered at this point. Educators and commissioners should be held to the same standards as our Loudoun County students, and that is to show your work. When students are required to show their work, it helps ensure they understand what's required to solve the problem. It is not too much to ask of our elected and appointed leaders who are demanding more money from constituents to do the same. Thank you.
Susan Gigerich.
Susan Gigerich from Loudoun County. July 1st will be my ninth year anniversary of moving here. The last time we were here facing a potential property tax increase, some of you weren't even in office. I'm here tonight to support Sheriff Davis and his department, and I'm more concerned for the public safety in Tellico Village and the rest of the county than 115 million in new spending for an unnecessary additional Loudoun County High School and athletic additions to Greenback School. Thank you.
Barbara Nicholson.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts. I'm Barbara Nicholson, and I've been in the area since 1999, but I moved to Loudoun County about four years ago. So I just wanted to put in, put forth a couple of ideas regarding the budget. The first thing that I was looking at and thinking about a, a new school for seven through 12 is because I come from Mariposa City, I saw what they did. And instead of, because they're kind of landlocked anyways, but instead of doing a new high school, they went about it by creating a new school in the middle. So they were, they had an intermediate school where they pulled up from elementary and down from middle, and then they could put the ninth graders back into the junior high, which made a lot more sense because ninth graders with 12th graders, I think we didn't really like that anyways. And I think it's more appropriate. So it was another way to create more space and also not have to have another football field and all the expenses that go along with having a high school. So I thought that was a good way to look at. And I didn't know if anybody had looked at that as a consideration or as an option, but I would ask that maybe someone do that because I think that was, it worked out really well for them. And then the other thing that I saw, and this was just something that stuck out to me because, and I've seen some information on it, is the artificial turf. That's something that I feel like high schools around here are spending a lot of money on and not really considering that long-term, that's really not a good idea because number one, you spend a million dollars upfront, but it only lasts for 10 years. You have to come back and spend perhaps another half million to put it down again. So that's a lot of money to consider, and I think that's way more expensive than keeping up with grass and maintaining that. Plus, the players have more injuries on turf, and even the NFL players don't even like it. They wish we would go back to grass. So I think it's something that is not necessary. I know there's some fields that already have it, but let's save the money. Let's not do it in Greenback. Let's give them a great football field, but let's do grass instead of turf because I think it's a better option and it saves money. So those were a couple of things that I wanted to put before you to think about before we spend all this money for the new budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa King.
Appreciate the time that you all are giving your folks to come up and make comments on area events and what's going on that affects our budget. And I am here tonight to speak on the Loudoun County Sheriff's Department budget respectfully, Jimmy, respectfully. Just going to read, and so if you can get through it a little quicker, I'll just read instead of just sharing my heart. There are at least three entities that can make changes in policies and procedures down at Loudoun County Sheriff's Department. That would be Jimmy Davis. He can make them himself. But I have seen a policy and procedures booklet, and it's a beautiful booklet. It looks amazing. It's a really well put together booklet, but not being followed is the problem. So there's three entities. Jimmy can change it or enforce it. You all can as county commissioners, as well as our state representatives, and even up to the congressmen. I've read it. It looks good, but unfortunately, it's not followed. There needs to be enforced, having a volunteer oversight committee appointed to make sure that these are followed. It would be a great idea. There's grants out there. There's lots of volunteers. It would not cost anything. What we're asking is that this department will take the half million dollars that they have asked and requested for to put in their budget coming up for this next fiscal year, that they would go back and consider putting a proper detox facility inside of the jail. Many, many addicts go in. 90% of those incarcerated, as you know, and Jimmy and I spoke about this, is in their on drug-related charges, whether that's paraphernalia, selling, using, violation probation, what have you. So it's a rotating door, and we need help in that jail to make these people get better. It is, there is an opportunity for folks to get better. If we start in the jail, that is going to make a huge improvement to our society. Our working class citizens, a lot of them are spending their days and nights homeless or in jail, what have you, because it's a leading cause of death now in not just younger generations, but up to mental age. But if we can start in the jail and have a proper detox for addicts, seven to 10 days, there's entities and grants and programs out there that are very available to do this and make it happen. Also, spending a little bit of money from the sheriff's budget, I don't think would hurt anything. I think before we give salaries and all these big increases, I think we need to look at the people that's laying in their suffering on the floors, major detox, vomiting, diarrhea, throwing up. Some of them are dying. Someone gets sent to the hospital, getting OR, online support, and then their families called in. And so, Chester will share in here in just a minute. But we do not live in a liberal country. I don't know why we allow this to happen, why we hide it the way that we do and we look the other way. I ask in this budget that it is amended and informed to be able to be open, like she, one of the ladies is talking about. The community needs to know more about what goes on. All inmates, whether they're diabetics, whether they're health, heart patients, whether they're addicts, if they're addicts, they need a proper seven to 10 day detox. That's nothing, that's not a big deal. If you do it right, it's really easily done and very inexpensive. They should not have to lay there jerking, seizing violently, throwing up, diarrhea on theirself, and various mott and all these things. If they're diabetics, they need to have the proper units of the type of diabetes medicine that they take. So Lasix, whatever the need is, they need proper medical care. If it has been prescribed by a doctor, who are we to take it away from them? They have civil rights while they are incarcerated, and they need to be taken seriously. My daughter almost died in there last August over a $25 chocolate charge. It almost cost her her life from her own prescribed medications being withheld. She suffered a hellish detox, massive injuries, jerking, seizing, dehydration, and much more. Then because she could not walk by day 13 or so, she suffered a severe concussion, a massive squeeze, damaged ribs, chest, cartilage, torn pensioners, and two bulging discs because an angry officer, seeing that she could not get up off the floor, and instead of trying to help her up, he jerked her up, he squeezed the daylights out of her, and he damaged her severely. And she still, she's here tonight to speak, but she is still in post-concussion syndrome. She, this is August 30th of last year, and we're still seeing that. We have ordered the Open Records Act by Attorney T. Scott Jones. It has been promised to us by Lenore City, our Loudoun County attorney, Bob Bowman, that they would have it backed to us June 27. We have asked for 100% transparency and the integrity of this department and for Mr. Davis, and we pray. and for Mr. Davis, and we pray that when we get it on the 27th, the digital footage, the paperwork for the lack of medical care. Day six, you did not see a nurse till day six. Just think of this as one of your kids or anybody sitting in here. I see all these wonderful things that the sheriff does. I see the toilet aisle, I see the heart that you have, Jimmy. I see your efforts, how hard you have worked, getting your FBI license, going through the academy. You have done some wonderful things, and I know that you have followed after a lot of these things that's happened in decades past, which you can fix them. Thank you all.
Tessa King?
Hi. I have lived here my whole life. I'm Tessa King. I've lived here my whole life, and I know a lot of you, and you probably know a little bit about me and my story. I was an addict for 18 years, and I was in and out of that jail. And I do want to talk about the budget just a little bit. I want to talk about how we can help those who cannot help themselves. I have been cleaning off the street drugs for almost nine years now. And I was in and out of Loudoun County before they built the new jail. And thank God that I didn't go back for a long time. And I went in there, like she said, on a $25 charge. That was my mother everyone. And it was stupid, because I was broke, and it was the stupidest thing I've ever done. And I wasn't honest. And then, but they took my medications. I didn't see a nurse for six days. I was ridiculed, I was talked down to by the officers. People, some of them I've known for a long time, and I didn't think that they would treat me that way. And now that the new jail is there, it is different. They need someone who knows what they're doing to run it. When I was talking about Jimmy, I'm talking about people in the jail. They need to understand what purpose it is, and how to treat people, and how to treat them like a human. I wasn't an addict, I wasn't a junkie in there. I wasn't in there for doing horrible, horrible things, but I was treated as so. I didn't see a doctor, or nurse till day six, and she barely, she gave me my blood pressure medicine. I had 13 to 14 medications that are on my blood thinners and everything. I have a lot of things going on with me, I always have. But I have been cleaning from the things that had me in a bad place for a while. But my question is, when are we going to put something in there to help people? Like that that have died or are close to it, like me. I laid on a mat for like two or three days. I mean, I seized, I fell off the bed, and they made fun of me more than anything, and then put me in a room and threw me a mat on the floor and told me to just lay right there in the middle of the floor and don't get up. And I laid there for a day and a half until they come in there and got me. And the officer that did it to me is standing in here too long. I almost left when I seen that. I don't leave my house because of this. I am struggling, I'm such a, I love people, I love to help people. That's what I've done the past nine years. And now I don't even leave my home. This was a lot for me to come out here tonight. And then to see the officer that picked me up off the ground when I could not walk because I was so dehydrated after day 12, day 11. And he came in there because I had court, and he said, "If you don't get up and walk crap, you're going to miss court, you're going to fail to appear." And I said, "Please, I can't walk." Two other officers were in there, so was the captain, and they're watching all of this happen. And he just comes in there and jerks me up so hard that I just feel my, my bones touching my back. And he says, "You don't have to go to court." And I said, "Please." My leg just was dropped right under me because I was so dehydrated. I laid up and begged him for a lot, and he said, "Get up and get to yourself." I begged him, "Please, just put some more on my lips." I had laid for two and a half days, in and out of seizures and in and out of delusions because of being off of so many medications. There needs to be a system in place. There needs to be more than one nurse there at a time. There needs to be, Knox County has it going. If you want a plan and find somewhere to do this right, ask Knox County. They have Calomnial NAD that helps you with mental health, mental health and addiction, right hand and hand. Why do we not do that? Why? If they're in there for long-term, why do we not do those things? Because those things helped me. GED proprio helped me in Knox County. I found my confidence in me. That was over 10 years ago, and thank God that was the last time I was there until this last August. And I, I never felt like this before in my life after being arrested. I've been so embarrassed, I have done so many things. Those embarrassing things, all those things that I did for 18 years brought me to a place where I can help other people. My purpose turned into pain, and I'm hoping that this pain that I'm dealing with daily, I still have a lot of this stuff going on because of what happened to me. I have been, I've had two surgeries, I have been in another hospital, I have been, I've barely been able to leave my home. So I'm asking, please, train your guards and get some kind of health system in there that is better than what it is today and what it has been for 20 years.
Boffick Husek? Boffick Husek? Tom Thaw?
Thanks for taking the time to hear in all of us. I would like to say very briefly, I agree with so much of what's already been said regarding the school expansion. I don't think I could say it any better or in any more detail. I would simply like to point out to you folks on the commission that your primary job is to represent your constituents, and I haven't heard anybody in any meeting I have attended regarding this school issue say, "What a good idea. We need to spend that money, all of it, and get this project going." Not one person. The last meeting I attended, nobody. Mr. Garen presented his issues, couldn't answer questions, dodged questions. The facts didn't all jive, and everybody sitting there listening to him walked away saying, "Nope, not going to happen." And that's what I'm asking you to do right now. When you consider this, consider what the people here are telling you, and it is your responsibility to represent them accurately and say, "You know what? We need to look at this a lot more closely." Thank you.
Mary Gaddy or Gaddy?
Gaddy.
Gaddy.
My name is Mary Gaddy, and I live in Commissioner Collins' district. Last week at the yacht club, I attended the superintendent's presentation, and I learned there that the proposed new middle school, high school, is going to be built on land that sits within the North City city limits, but was subsequently annexed to the county. This got me kind of researching, well, when did this annexation occur? And in doing that research, I learned that the First Baptist Church bought this property from the Harris family for $925,000 in early 2022. Then in October of 2022, the county bought the property from the church for $1.8 million, well, $1,825,000. I found that concerning, that in a matter of just a few months, the county paid $900,000 more for the same piece of property that the church bought earlier that year. If indeed this new high school, middle school, high school, you should decide that we don't want to go down that road and spend $95 million. I guess I would propose that we sell that land back to the church and take that $900,000 thereabouts and put it towards the Lenore County High School CTE addition. I think it's a fabulous idea that the commissioners are considering, and the school board is looking to try to enhance the community or the technical vocational curriculum. It's sorely missed, and we need it. And we need to encourage kids that a four-year degree isn't the only way to go. And pursuing a technical vocation is not only lauded, but it's necessary. And I would like to see that money from that property sale go towards that addition. Thank you for hearing our comments.
David T. Winkler?
Good evening, Mayor, board members. I'm going to be brief. I was retired from a village, and so we were part of a big school district. And we shared it with towns around us. And talking about abuse of spending, I seen it. They wanted a new parking lot, nothing wrong with it, they got it. So did every other school. They wanted a pool field, they got it. So did the other high school. They had the attitude, if you don't use it, lose it. So I just think it's a waste of money. I think people should be rewarded on what they save. And then they can look at it and say, "Okay, you cut your budget so long, you earned it." But the other thing I also like to say is, a lot of the residents also stated, was, crap, in Greenback, Greenback rates six out of 10. Okay, and then going to stores, I got to explain to the kids working there. "Okay, here's the amount of change you got to give me." What they're getting, teaching these kids, and all the money that's being spent after school, after school, after school, and what we're getting out of this bunch of kids that know knowledge of all. I know Einstein, but I feel like sometimes they don't want some of these children. It's sad. I don't know where this government's going. I mean, all our youth is being uneducated. I think there should be more time, money spent on their education. Teachers got to enforce earnings on them or something, because they're coming out as a bunch of dummies. I'm just being cynical about it. But yeah, I've seen the misuse of spending, and I'm just basically looking at our colleges. All they are is Club Meds. I mean, they charge me, the students have much to go to college for what? Just to say they can go to spa, or they can go to the gym, or they can get coffee down in the lobby. It's a waste of money. So I just basically saying that our school systems is a workaholic. Thank you for your time.
Pat Hunter?
My name is Pat Hunter. My family has resided in Loudoun County for 43 years. Having said that, we have faithfully paid our county property taxes. Our adult children attended Edens, North Mill, and Lenore City High School, and my grandchildren attended Lenore City Schools. I'd like to thank the mayor first of all. I've attended all the meetings, and he was really great about providing all the budget material. I learned a lot during those 13 days, or less. But the mayor has spoken about adding another employee to the Veterans Service Department, and we respectfully request that all staffing be veterans, veterans serving veterans. My husband is retired, he's a veteran. He, like other veterans, proudly served his country to protect our freedoms and rights and democracy. The Budget Committee also spoke about giving money to the Chamber of Commerce, up to $120,000, even though the visitors bureau building in Lenore City was sold for $1 million. The chamber promotes business and commerce, not tourism. Please consider cutting that amount and to spend it instead on membership. Want membership? That sounds fine, but it's not tourism, it's promoting business. The contributions to nonprofits should be a personal matter and not a governmental, political matter. In my opinion, if government proposes to use taxpayer money, essential services such as fire protections come first. I'm requesting consideration of a new policy where nonprofits requesting funding will receive a nominal amount. Government should not tax citizens just so government can turn around and give taxpayer money. This is not the best of times. The trustee said that he sent 2,800 delinquent tax letters. AFT, the adequate facilities taxes down, building permits are down. I have a concern that office place for battered women, battered and battered women and children was eliminated altogether. I think that should be reconsidered. Just last week, there was a shooting. Two deputies were shot in Blount County. Domestic abuse is serious, and these ladies and children need a place that we, as a community, should support. I'm requesting clarification about the amount of money raised for full-time and part-time regular employees. If certain employees receive step raises, will they also include the 1,200 proposed pay raises for full-time employees too? Please consider a policy for all pay colas, cost of living adjustment for employees. It should follow the CPI, Consumer Price Index, and not an arbitrary number of 5% for part-timers when social security projections will be estimated at 2.5% for seniors in the upcoming year. I think it should be tied to the CPI. The sheriff and jail employees' pay scale is yet another matter. The sheriff and the jail personnel put their lives on the line, and I believe those two departments deserve special consideration because of the perils and challenges they face in the light of duty. Safety in our community benefits everyone and our quality of life. I know that when I had an opportunity or had to call the sheriff's department, they were very, they were quick, the detectives were very attentive, and the process worked for me. And I know that during the budget process, they spoke about some of the things that the previous lady spoke about, and I wish she had attended the meeting, because I think you were fair in your, in what you're going to give the sheriff and the nurses were described or discussed also. With regards to the property tax increase, remember that there's going to be, the city of Loudoun residents will see a property tax of nine cents and 25 cents. And I don't think this is a good time to do this without a feasibility study, as they did in 2007. 2007, when we paid $47,000 to get real information to look at these issues. Thank you.
Now that's all I have on the public hearing. Is there any additional that wanted to speak on the public hearing rather than? Come up and tell us your name, please.
My name is Nadine Whitcock, and I'm from Greenback. I just wanted to say just very, very briefly, one of the things that occurs to me is that this, the timing on this seems difficult. We're living in a year in which a very important election's going to happen, and things could change dramatically as time moves on. And I think we should look at this with that in mind, because the citizenry of this country are dealing with some very high inflationary problems. People are having a lot of problems paying their bills, and adding property tax increases to these people is not good at this time. I think giving this a little more consideration over the next year or two would be a very good idea. Thank you.
Okay, first and foremost, on a very, very heated subject, thank you all for coming out. Everyone was amazingly civil, because I know this is a hot topic, no matter where you're at. Appreciate everyone's coming out. Now, the public hearing will end, will take a, first chairman, 10 minutes? 10 minutes? We'll take a 10-minute break, and at that point in time, we will start the workshop. This time, the public hearing is adjourned. This time, the public hearing is adjourned.
I'm waiting for it. Hey, you got, uh, Dr. Maschel, you know?
Before we get him down, now we don't care, right?
Yeah. Okay. We're missing a couple. Okay, we got Mike Aaron. Come on down.
I want to thank, uh, Captain Mission for your assistive authority, and I want to thank the municipal board that's here in the back that I represent. I have ten elected officials that I represent. Because I have some information and updates that I want to share with you. The bottom line is, we're out of space and we're still growing. So that's, that's the message we're forward on to.
One second, Mike. Uh, Jim, see if you can turn off this first bank right here, so we can't hardly, I, that's better.
Okay, next time. So the, the school district has a budget plan that they look at every year. Uh, we use enrollment numbers and growth trends to make effective use of the district's facilities and allow for growth in the county. The school board directed my leadership team to look at options for expanding facilities at Eaton, North Middle, Philadelphia, and Loudoun High School CTE in the fall of 2021, three years ago. The school board decided at that time that the best solution was a new 712 school on the north end of the county. This would restructure grade levels at Eaton Elementary, which is currently a K4, and that would turn them into a K3, leaving seven day classrooms available for growth uh, without any additional facility work at that, at that location. North Middle School, uh, which is currently a 5.8, we would restructure it into a grade 4 through 6, which would also leave seven or eight classrooms available for growth at that location without having to do any additional construction. As you know, there are challenging traffic issues at that campus, having both schools on the, on the same location. So we're hoping that that will ease in the, in the interim as well. Also, in the fall of 2021, uh, the school board sent a survey to the parents at North Middle School. Uh, the survey that was sent out, 2/3 of the parents returned that, which is a pretty good, uh, return on a survey, uh, to get a 2/3 response rate. About 70% of the parents did say that they were interested in sending their students to a county-operated 712 school on that end of the county. With that information, along with the enrollment increases that we were seeing, uh, the board decided to move forward with that option. The school board also felt, because this is a multifaceted approach, the, the growth is the catalyst for this, the board also felt that that would provide, uh, parents a counting option for grades 9 through 2, 9 through 12 with school board representation on that end. Now, I'm not saying that the Loomer City School Board, the school board does not represent our parents well. I'm just saying that our parents have expressed concern over the years that they would like to be able to elect their representatives, uh, for the school that they attend. Since we don't operate on, operate a high school on that end of the county, the 712 issue would, would solve that as well. Myself and my school board chairman met with Loomer City Schools Director and board member to share a proposed plan back in the fall of 2021. Now, since 2021, this commission has approved the school board's request to purchase property, which we have done. This commission has also supported the school board in, uh, funding the design for the projects that I'm updating. So the school board does appreciate your support, uh, so far through this project. Here are some enrollment numbers that we've seen over the last three years. Uh, we're currently at 665 at Eaton with no open classrooms. We had no open classrooms at Loudoun Elementary at 726. We have no open classrooms at North Middle at 749. We had no open classrooms at Philadelphia at 544. Now, when you look at the bottom, you'll see in 2021, we had an increase of 106 students, which is a 2.3% increase. The state considers anything over 1 and 1/4% to be fast growing. So the next year, which I want you to, to take note of in 2022, we saw a 4% increase of 194 students. So I will refer back to that in a few minutes. And then this last year, we saw an increase of 1.8%, which is 91 students. So we've been fast growing the last three years. At Eaton and North Middle, we're currently at 665 at Eaton. Eaton and North currently have no open classrooms, they're utilizing spaces as classrooms, like closets and bookrooms. Guidance, social worker, and computer science teachers are on a cart at Eaton. At North Middle, the average class size for fifth and sixth grade is 24.7, the state limit is 25. The average class size for seventh and eighth grade is 29.8, the state limit is 30. So we're pushing the limit on both those. We're likely going to have to add at least four more teacher beds that come in here. This is a picture of Eaton, uh, the bookroom where our social worker is at, the closet where we're running our intervention classroom. In Philadelphia, we saw an increase of 3.1%, 4.7%, and 6% over the last three years. They currently have no open classrooms, they're utilizing smaller spaces as classrooms, like the two visitor locker rooms and the closet area. Guidance teachers on a cart, the music's house in the gym. There's a picture of the locker room, picture of the closet we're using as instructional space at Philadelphia. Loudoun High School has seen some increases as well. The, the biggest need there currently is increased demand for career and technical classes, and expanding space for machining, welding, automotive. Our machine and welding area is really tight. If you could go ahead and advance. You can see on the left, we need some more space to fit the 20 students in that space, along with all the equipment that we have, to be an effective learning environment. So we'll be expanding the machine and welding into the automotive section, and then we're going to add a three bay section, uh, to move the automotive into, to expand our facilities at Loudoun High School. Greenback, we're also seeing, uh, increase there, but the increased demand is typically for gym utilization. That's a K12 facility. There are certain times during the week where we have three classrooms and the gym at the same time, elementary, middle, and high school. We have 10 athletic teams that need to use the gym, and we have basketball teams that are having to practice early in the morning. The other issue there is the condition of the facility and ADA compliance. Did you sense that? You can see the greenback bleachers, that's third visitor side, and we can see that compare that to Loudoun High Schools, and we need to do some work at that facility to bring that up to.
I helped build those. I helped build those bleachers on the visitor's side.
Here are some previous building projects that we have, uh, completed. The new Greenback School, uh, was in 2013, but we didn't address the athletic facilities at that time. New Fort Loudon Middle was built in 2013. There's a cafeteria addition at Philadelphia in 2013. We combined Loudoun Elementary and, and the old Fort Loudon. If you remember, when we built the new Fort Loudon Middle School, we took the old Fort Loudon, combined it with Loudoun Elementary, uh, and as you can see, up at the top, right hand, that was in 2014, we had 461 students in Loudoun Elementary. We currently have 726. So that, even in that combined facility of two, two buildings, we're full without open space. And we're currently working on a project to remodel some interior space to add four classrooms for this upcoming year, and moving the free day out for, uh, a fifth classroom for growth. But, but, but that one, just there.
Sorry.
Uh, in 2017, we did a few more projects by adding a wing on Highland Park on the north end of the county, an additional wing at Loudoun High School, and an additional bathroom at North Middle. Thank you, Tim. Here's some information, I'll show you where we're at. We're not, uh, really having any more babies than we used to. You can see the number of next year is going to be up a little bit, and the next year's going to be up a little bit more. But if you look at the birth, the. But if you look at the burst that happened five years ago and compare that to the number of kindergarten students that we're getting, you can see that we've increased from 73%, 74% of the kids being born in Loudon County to 84% and 86% of those kids coming to Loudon County schools. So we're seeing a greater percentage of students, of kids that are being born, come to Loudon County schools over the years. The census in 2010 had us at 48,556. The 2020 census had us at 54,886. The estimated census in 2023 has us at 60,591, with 19.1% of that population under 18. On the lower right hand, those are the building permits that have been issued over the last few years. In 2019, you can see a total of 454. In 2020, it's a total of 561. 2021, you'll notice 1,207, significant increase. 2022, 772. In 2023, 687. If you look at those numbers compared to the enrollment numbers that I shared with you earlier, if you remember, the large increase that we saw was in 2020. So essentially, if you look at building permits, we're seeing an average increase in enrollment of about 16% the following year in our school system. So if we have 1,000 permits issued this year, the next year, we can expect to see about 160 new students. That's a trend that we've noticed from looking at the data and the building permits. If you look at our growth data, this is the Tennessee State Data Center, which is UT Boyd's foundation. They house projections of enrollment, projections of population for every county in the state. Number wise, as much as those, the cities are, and there are many offerings for our students in Loudon County. We're also on the top 25% of district. You can see in 1819, exemplary district in 2021.
Thank you, Tim. Is that not the first step in determining a new school if it's needed? Your presentation is the first update I've seen since I attended a school board meeting where the architect said he couldn't fit everything onto the property that you wanted. I am pro-education. I would call myself a child advocate, as I've served many years on the Lenore City School Board as chairman. We did feasibility studies there before we ever asked for any extra monies. I have arrived at a different conclusion, and I'm happy to go through every one of these developments and share the correct numbers, or I can hit the highlights. For example, Haven Hills, your info says 164 units. It's actually 31. Most disturbing, AJ Bell Property on Old Highway 95, 1,200 units. It is actually 150 units. Cheetham Property, 1,044 units out by Home Depot. That project has been dormant for some time. There are no plaits. There are no site plans. The Lloyd Property, 172 units. It's not even happening. I think they built one house there. Food City, 300 units. The property hasn't even been purchased. So there are some developments that have completed. Ashmore, Universal Town Creek, Town Creek West. Those kids are already in schools. That's been completed. That's not coming. That is already here. Furthermore, from the lines drawn on your page, the majority are hitting Lenore City Schools. It's right in the second district, in the Lenore City School District. So you don't have 5,033 units, but you have 1,492. And if we use the top percentage of your formula of 20%, that's 298 kids by your formula. So I just want to say that I take my position very seriously, and I've been presented numbers that have been misleading and inaccurate, and I make my decisions on facts and not speculation. There hasn't been a traffic study done or completed. Who's going to pay for roads? So I am not raising taxes on the citizens of Loudon County with inaccurate numbers and speculation for $115 million school project.
Any other questions?
Can you answer her questions?
I got the information from Mr. Shaver. Just one piece of all the enrollment. We're actually seeing enrollment increases. We're actually seeing enrollment increases in our schools, as I showed you. We're out of space. We don't have additional classrooms in this, that one slide. I'm waiting to be accurate, and that's the number stuff.
I assure you it's accurate to the letter. Haven Hills, honey, Haven Hills? Check the plan.
I have.
167.
I have. 31.
Cheetham Property, approved for whatever I said right there. By zone, by rezon is approved.
You need to talk to the right people.
I go to the media. You can challenge it all you want. There's not a single line on there that's wrong.
I've got it. I've got it right here. I'll share it with you.
Can we finish the presentation?
No, it's not correct.
Can we finish the presentation?
Finish it up?
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Brian Pierce. I'm the senior project manager and co-architect of the hospital. If you want to go ahead and advance.
Up there. She has it.
I have it.
So this is site plan for the large school, the 712. Upper left-hand corner is full-size baseball, softball. Lower left-hand corner is multipurpose field, soccer, football, and a track and field. The L-shaped school is there parking. The detention pond for the entire property is basically the existing pond that's there now. Next slide, please. So this has been a large view of the baseball and the softball field, dugouts, fieldhouse, et cetera. Next. So this is the first floor plan of the 712. Long, skinny vertical wing is all of the CTE programs. Basically, the lower white blue portion on the, our bottom right-hand corner is all of the middle school. So what we've done is separate the high school and the middle school. The only place they cross traffic is in the commons. They're in the lower left-hand corner where the cafeteria is and the gymnasium and the auditorium. Basically, all of their classes are all separated. Okay, next slide. So this is the upper floor. Again, all high school, and then we've got the middle school STEM and some of the other computer and science classes down there. So next. This is a large plan of the gymnasium complex. Upper right-hand corner is the band. Got some special ed up in the left-hand corner. Girls locker rooms, boys locker rooms here, 2,000 seats on the floor and retractable seats. And then the bottom level is all computer science and other middle school classes. Next. Upper level of the gym, again, STEM for the middle school on the bottom, two auxiliary gyms, and then some additional science classes. Next, please. View of the gym. Next. This is a view of the commons area. We've got kitchens, culinary arts, and then auditorium over here, and then the administration up at the top. Next. So this is kitchen and the culinary arts, just a layout showing me all of the kitchen equipment and stuff. Next slide, please. This is second level. So we've got, again, some high school classes here. We've got the media center in the bottom left-hand corner. We've got some science labs on the lower portion, and the vertical core there is all middle school guidance council. So next. A large plan of some of the CTE. We've got up at the top, you can't really see it, but we have automotive, construction, general trades. We have HVAC, electrical, welding, and then health science class here. And each CTE lab has its own classroom with it as well. So next slide, please. And here you can see the other CTE classes. Okay, next. So we've got a proposed view of the outside of the main car rider drop-off area. Next. This is another view of the front end of the school with the car rider drop-off, bus drop-off is in the back of the school. Next. So this is commons area and then the admin and the car rider entrance here. Next. We've got a view of the auditorium, and it's a multipurpose auditorium. About half of it exceeds the rest of it. We can set up in banquet style or whatever. And then a typical view of one of the classroom areas. Next. So we're going to talk about greenback next. Football field and the auxiliary gym down here. Next. So football. We're going to tear down all of the existing bleachers, move the field 10 yards, new LED lights, new bleachers with ADA access both on the home and the visitor side. Base bed will be for grass. Artificial turf will be an add alternate in this project. Next. We have the auxiliary gym here, and it's mainly, can be open for use after, on weekends and after school, but it's mainly to separate the big kids from the little kids in gym class. So next. Gymnasium, your typical gym, restroom, storage, a couple of bleachers there, and then a hitting and pitching area on a mezzanine over the storage and restroom areas. Next. And it's a pre-engineered middle building. Next. Okay, this is Philadelphia, and I apologize, this is an older layout before we did some more layouts. So next. So this is the final plan. We've got new bus drop-off up at the top with a new administration area, a music room, then seven classrooms, and then we've got a bottom row of four classrooms down here for a total of 11 additional classrooms. And then that center white section is, we're fixing some issues that the fire marshal was brought to our attention for some exiting from some of the existing classrooms. Next. And this is the outside view of Philadelphia and a view into the music room. Next. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'm going to get Jim Jenkins out of here. Jim, come on up here with your two resolutions.
Let's light back on back up, please.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate you adding these to your agendas. The first one will be a resolution amending zoning map of Loudon County, Tennessee pursuant to chapter 713-7-05, Tennessee code annotated, to rezon from C2, general commercial district to R1 suburban residential district. Loudon County tax map 015M parcel 034. Located at 03 Robinson Drive, Loudon County, Tennessee, situated in the second legislative district. This C2 property is about three plus acres to look at rezon, about 1.2 acres to the R1 to put a dwelling on that portion of property. And then the existing residential use that is occurring will be discontinued, bringing the property into compliance with the current rates.
Any questions for Jim? If not, they'll be on next Monday night's commission meeting after the budget adoption.
Please, sir.
Okay.
Next one is a resolution amending zoning map of Loudon County, Tennessee pursuant to chapter 713-7-05, Tennessee code annotated, to rezon from A2 rural residential district to A3 developing agricultural district. Loudon County tax map 057, parcel 286.01. Located at 21145 St. Road, Loudon County, Tennessee, situated in the fourth legislative district. This gentleman just owns a larger tract. He's looking to create a one acre lot that complies with our new A1 or A3 zoning regulations. Then he's going to take a small strip of land to add to his current parcel, leaving the remaining tract for his dog.
Thank you, Jim. This one was brought, this is part of Article 5 we had talked about. Everybody was so worried that with the five acres that we, you couldn't separate down to one acre tracts. This is the first that you can see. It went through planning, 90, and I'll ask for it to be approved at our next meeting.
You mean, but when they did it, rolling in, the time didn't stop as we know it or anything, just passed just as easy as pie?
Easy as pie.
What about that?
Anything else for Jim?
Thank you all.
Clear. Thank you, Jim. Okay, I have three gentlemen who haven't had a chance to speak at the workshop here, so Dr. Lynn Massingale, step up here.
Thank you, Chairman Colvin. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, there. My name is Lynn Massingale. For almost all 25 years, I've lived on Beale Chapel Road in one of the two locations. For many years, I was a director of emergency medical services for the state of Tennessee, and for many years, I was a director of the paramedic EMT training program at Rome State. I'm here tonight in that regard, and most importantly, for 45 years, I've been an emergency physician in this community and in this region. I worked many shifts in the Loudon Hospital, for those of you who don't remember that, in that emergency room. Also was a director at Park West and was a director of the UT Hospital Emergency Room, when we developed the trauma center and the regional trauma program. I'm here to request your support tonight for an important project. It's important to students, I think, in the county, and the next speaker will talk to that. And it's also important to any resident of the county who may need health care in the future, which I think respectfully includes all of us. I co-chair a capital campaign for Rome State and TCAT. For those in the audience who may not know this, Rome State actually isn't named for Rome County. It's named for Governor Archibald Rome, who was the second governor of Tennessee. And TCAT is what Governor Lee renamed all the state vocational schools, Tennessee College of Applied Technology. Many of us would know that as the old vocational schools. The Rome State and TCAT are going together for a project that I want to tell you about in just a second and ask your support for. But first, a little bit of background. First, I know firsthand, both as a doctor and as a patient, that we're blessed with really excellent health care in this region. Like many places, though, we've lost a lot of people in the workforce in health care in the last few years. I know all of you know that, either from personal family experiences, friends or colleagues who've been in health care, or having been a patient with really amazingly long waits for service in hospitals all around the country. In the last two years nationally, we've lost 100,000 nurses. In the last four years, we've lost over 600,000, and a fifth of current nurses working said that they will leave the profession by 2030. And they've done that for a variety of reasons, but that creates a vicious cycle. If you're a nurse on the floor working short-handed, you get stressed, you worry about the quality of care, there's a lot of burnout, and it causes some of those nurses to leave. And then lastly, the community and country as a whole is aging, and the increased acuity of patients is driving up the demand for services. There are a lot of options in the country and in this community to get education as a nurse, or as a doctor, or as a paramedic, not as a paramedic, but as a nurse, or an x-ray tech, or others. There's none of those as cost-effective as Rome State or TCAT. Rome State and TCAT currently have about 5,500 students. About 800 of those are health sciences students. About 6% of those are from Loudon County, students from Loudon County, and that's the historical average. Last year, this current year, '24, we're actually, the school was actually up about 183% above that number. But if you look at a six-year trend, about 6% of all the patients come from the county. So what do they create at Rome State and TCAT? Well, they create EMTs and paramedics. They create LPNs, CNAs, and RNs. They create dental assistants. They create occupational therapists, vision care specialists. They produce people who can do sleep studies, and they produce surgical technicians, medical equipment specialists who maintain the equipment that we all depend on. A wide variety of people that we all have to depend on, whether we go to the doctor's office, the dentist's office, the emergency room, or an inpatient on the floor, we're a patient in surgery, we're a patient in the nursing home or assisted living. No matter where we are, whether it's Fort Loudon Medical Center or any other hospitals in the region, we spend about five or 10 minutes a day with the doctor, and we spend all the rest of the time with these other people. Training of those personnel is critical, both their formal education and their clinical training. training. Their clinical training used to have to all be done in person, now a lot of it can be done in simulation labs. Some of you may know, you can get qualified today to fly a 757 airplane and never sit in the airplane just because of simulators. Medical simulation isn't that good, but it's really good and we need a good SIM center. This facility will have a very good SIM center. And finally, we're also raising money for scholarships. This facility will provide great education and jobs for people in the community and it'll provide the health care workers that all of us are going to need. The project specifically was championed by Rome State and TCAT, but it was really also championed by Governor McNally. I did not know Governor McNally was coming to that door by source, I don't think, but he carried the water list and the legislation with Governor Lee's support and got $67 million for this project, for this building. The Covenant Health gave them a $10 million piece of property right across the street from the hospital to build it and it's under construction today. We're trying to raise, Jim Anderson, the CEO of Covenant, I are the co-chairs, we're trying to raise seven and a half billion dollars, five million I think to go to the SIM center, two and a half to go to scholarships. Knox County has committed $500,000. Lenore City has committed $30,000. LCUB has committed $30,000. All those over three years. And we're asking Loudoun County, Rome County and Anderson each for $80,000 and we're asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
You all know me, but a lot of the people in this room do not, so I'll give you a very quick thumbnail sketch of me. I came in 1984 and actually it was Dr. Massingale, Southeast Emergency Physicians that hired me for a couple shifts to work at the old hospital. He kept me alive until they could build my practice. So, he and I go back a long way. I'm still practicing. I practice now in Loudoun County, but I practiced in Lenore City for decades. So, I've been around here for 40 years. But I'm going to speak to you tonight not as a health care professional, but as a teacher. Because the three years, 2013-
Sir, you're addressing the commissioner.
Sorry. 2013 to 2016, I was a high school teacher at Farragut High School and I taught the CTE department. I was their health science instructor. So, let me talk to you about this project's effect on the health care professionals. I'm going to talk to you about its effect on students. So many students in our high schools want to go into the health care professions, but in order to get the training they want, they have to go far away. And the statistics are pretty daunting. 95% of people stay in the area where they're trained. So, if one of our high school students goes far away to get their training, the chances are they don't come back here. The average salary, first year salary for these type of professionals who Dr. Lynn Massingale talked about is $45,000 to $50,000. That's a lot of money and these are healthcare, these are students who can enter a health care training, health care profession and they'll stay here and they'll support the physicians who come into this community. So, from a teacher's perspective, this is an incredible project and I would like to pass out to each of you a letter that Mr. Garen wrote in support of us and Dr. Barker and Mark Weeks, who's the director of the CTE program at Lenore City High School. All three of them see that this is, this type of project will be a boon to their CTE departments because they will now be able to say, you want to go into health care profession? Just go down the street 10 miles and you'll get world-class education and then you can come back here and serve the community that raised you and educated you. So, what I'm telling you tonight, what Dr. Massingale is telling you, is that we are facing in the imminent future, a severe shortage in health care professionals and it's going to impact all of us because we're all going to need health care. And I am telling you and he is telling you that here is a solution to that problem. It is a win-win for this community. It is not a Knox County project. It is a regional project that will benefit all of us. And we're asking you for your public support so that the citizens of this county will stand up and say, yeah, we want this health care training facility to be in our neighborhood so that our kids can come back and take care of us. So, thank you. I appreciate all of the time that you've spent listening to me and I'll be back with
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, the last speaker of the night gets the award for patience. Richard Caldwell, come on up. Here's your time in the sun.
My name's Richard Caldwell. I've been a resident of Loudoun County for the past 10 years. I live way out in Greenback. My property actually spans both counties. I think three or four acres of my place are actually in Blount County. My driveway is in Blount County. We have recently been kind of barraged with excessive truck traffic, talking 80,000 pound dump trucks running between the quarry and the new Blount County subdivision that they put right at the end of Lugodderd Lane on Morganton Road. We've been dealing with this truck issues for, since we moved there. Our water meter happens to sit right at the inside corner of Lugodderd Lane and Morganton. I have a private water service that runs all the way up to my house, which is a little over a quarter mile. It is in public right of way. I dealt with tractor trailers coming over there. I dealt with trucks from a boat manufacturer over there coming through there, running over my water line. I've had to replace my water line box twice. The last time I moved it actually back, it cost about $1,000 to me. South Blount County Utilities have been out there numerous times. I think they've gone through four or five lives on their water meter. Blount County did come out and realized that there is an issue there at that corner. If you're going northbound of Lugodderd Lane, heavy trees on the right side, not adequate stopping distance, you can't see a stop sign. We put a stop sign on the other side, also put in some delineators there. Two of those have already been, five delineators were put in around that corner, inside corner from northbound Maureyton, you know what I'm talking about, Southfield, and turning out to Lugodderd Lane. And two of those delineators have been taken out in the last two years. I talked with them when they put that in, they also put a Lugodderd Lane sign instead of just the intersection side and westbound so that you know that it's there so that people can make an appropriate turn instead of running past the intersection when it's, you know, wet out there and running up a water meter. Since this new subdivision has come in, we've started running into some major issues with pavement failure. The trucks are loud, they don't seem to have mufflers on them. I don't know, maybe that's just me and living out in the nice lovely quiet country of Greenback. The safety issue, you know, with not just trucks turning there, I've seen a Swift truck stuck there about three, four years ago. He actually tried to make the turn and his front wheels went over the edge of the road. So, it's stuck right in Morganton Road. You have people go down Morganton Road, what, 45, 50, 55 some days? So, there's that safety issue. There's also two tight corners just south of Tarwater Road that are way too tight, almost for a school bus, too tight for a school bus. So, there's a major issue with tractor trailer traffic, but lately we've been getting massive traffic, you know, coming from the quarry back. I've talked with most of the contractors that are out there. They've been really great. The general contractor, RSK Construction did. We've run into some issues just in this last, this last spring with, what, four potholes have had to be patched. And when I say pothole, I don't mean a pothole. I mean 20 feet long, came up, had to bring out an excavator, dig it out, replace it with gravel until, you know, you could get hot mix this spring and replacing those. So, four potholes have been replaced on that road alone. I've had to replace a front wheel bearing on a car. I've seen cars go through there with blown out tires and cracked rims just from the potholes. Most of this is happening on the Blount County side. My main concerns are with the roadway itself. That probably has a 30-year roadway lifespan and just this last year, one of the potholes that was just replaced is now, you know, squishing out and becoming plastic failure on it.
That road you live on was never meant to hold dump trucks.
Exactly.
It was never built for those large dump trucks.
So, I talked with Billy Pickle over at Roadways and he has put up a no truck sign heading southbound at my, on my property, at the property, at the county line. However, there's not one coming the other direction from Tarwater. He said he is not willing to put one up there because technically it's a county road and quote unquote, anyone can use it without a, some sort of a direction from, from the county commission that says, you know, that this road is not designed for this. My proposal is to put a road, is to direct the traffic down 95 and then Morganton Road. It's .8 miles longer. My proposal would be to put a 40,000 pound weight limit, 20,000 tons. All the traffic is what's bringing the fully loaded trucks because the pavement is failing on the side and right in the middle. Okay? Also, it's a 16 foot wide road section. Those trucks are nine feet wide. You toss in the mirrors and someone has to go off the road to get there. I'm concerned that over time, that my water service line, which sits about two feet off of the pavement, is going to crack.
That road is like a lot of roads in the county. I go, I go that way all the time. All that's part of my travel. That road from Morganton Road on to Goddard, when, if I'm pulling out from Goddard on to Morganton, if there's anybody, you can't turn off Morganton with somebody sitting on Goddard Lane. You've got to wait and let either Goddard Lane out or let the guy turn up. That's how narrow the road is.
We have a bee situation.
And there is road limits. I'm just, I'm not sure exactly where the, what part of that road is in Loudoun County and what it is, but yeah. We've had, we could commiserate with you. We've got a project right now in the county where dump trucks have destroyed a road and commissioners-
Lenore City?
When you finish, would you get with Mr. Goddard? Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, Mr. Cal, it's just, we'll do what we can do. We can do, you know, Billy Pickle's helped you out some, but like I said, that road is just not, it'd be like trying to run a dump truck down your driveway. I mean, that's, it's not built for dump trucks.
And let me tell you about, let me tell you about weight limits. Why they don't work. No truck signs are much better. They can be cited for failure to observe. If you put a weight sign up, you have to prove they're overweight. That's why the THP and nobody else don't like the weight signs.
I can almost guarantee you that if you can attain a weight slip from the quarry, which they should be carrying with them. I don't know, they might be over 80,000 pounds.
They may be, but you have to be able to prove that for them to be cited for weight limits. That's why no trucks are better than the weight limit part.
I understand. The guy that, with MDM Trucking did contact, I called him two months ago and he said, yeah, we can use a different road. You know, I'm from Greenback, I understand it, I get it. And then last Tuesday, he made like 25 or 30 runs up through there, just himself, and he's the only truck that's been up there that has caused this pavement to fail that was just patched.
Is all that going into the new subdivision there?
Yes, sir.
All the rock going in there?
There were 75 new lots there. I can guarantee you, not people in Greenback can deal with 400,000.
I got, I got a call when that happened and I told him, sorry, it's just across the county line, I can't help you, that's in Blount County.
And is there any possibility that, how would I go about working with maybe even Blount County so they can get it? I mean, Loudoun County is getting no additional tax revenue from a 75 acre subdivision like Blount County. It's like crazy.
Call the Blount County, I'd start with the Blount County Highway Department Superintendent.
I know.
Okay, call him. And if it helps, I'll call, talk to him, whatever. Like I said, they could go tell the supply kite since it's in Blount County, but like I said, no harm, give them a call. Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda, and it'll be there next Monday night, is a resolution that deals with military leave policy for county employees. Commissioner Shaver?
Thank you, Chairman Colin. You'll have in your stuff right here, Commissioner Quillen may be the only one familiar with the places and names I'm about to talk about, but in 1979, Loudoun County Commission voted, Tammy will have it up there in a second. Loudoun County Commissioner voted, it was moved by Commissioner Eldridge and second by Commissioner Jones to deed a right, to deed right of way off Mountain View Drive to Joe Norwood. The vote was unanimous on Mountain Road. You know where Joe and Rosemary, top corner?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Norwood has now passed away. Ms. Norwood is looking at options that she has. The children are looking at options. I have the realtors back here also, if there's any particular question. So, as they're looking at the potential to sell this property or whatever they're going to do, the question of this right of way came up. Now, since 1965 or whenever the Norwoods have been there, they have maintained all of this in the red line. As far as they knew, it was theirs. It was deeded to them in 1979 from Loudoun County Commission. When they got ready to do the paperwork, Rosemary, you know, this is your realtor. This is a question-
Why didn't they use me?
This is a question that came up about how to clean this up for them. And I told them, if you look at this, this is what our current county map looks like compared to what they've always thought it looked like based on county commission action. So, I told them that I will be glad to put this on the floor, it's in our district, mind Joe's district, for us to confirm what the 1979 county commission did as fact. Apparently whoever was supposed to follow up on it, and we don't even do that anymore. Used to, I guess they did it. Nowadays, we just abandon. So, at this time though, they said they were going to deed the right of way to the property owner. If it ever happened, nobody anywhere can find a document anyhow from Mike Campbell's office. I talked to Billy Pickle, showed him all this. Billy said, I have no problem, it's all yours now anyhow. So, my intent at our next voting meeting, I'm looking back at the real estate folks, is for, is for us to vote to confirm what the 1979 county commission did as fact. Does that work? Does that resolve the problem?
Yes, and just to clarify what that right of way is, which is what you had put in the red there.
Right.
That's the right of way area.
Because the old one, if there was ever any minutes, any beyond what we've got, planning commission didn't have them, nobody knows exactly, but we know what the Norwoods maintained and took care of ever since they've been there. So, I will have this on the agenda to clarify what was given to the Norwoods in 1979. This is based on family conversations and family memories and things, of course, they get, they get cloudy as time goes on. So, that's it, that's all I've got.
Okay, that'll be next Monday.
If I have any questions or... So, how long you sat to hear that? I told you.
Aaron Rice, Sheriff.
Are these two different lots or is it the same lot?
Same thing. Yeah. What you're, what you're seeing here in the green one is what's on the county database, county platte database. And the one on the right is the same thing except in the red was what was supposed to have been, I'm sorry, what was supposed to have been given away or deeded to the Norwood family at the time, but it's all the same stuff.
I think it's good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the Budget Committee, these were the things that were recommended and will be on the agenda. So, the first thing was the acceptance, approval and acceptance of the FY25 letter grant with non-action funds, consideration of a request to approve ARPA funds in the amount of $3,000 to the Loudoun County Humane Society from Seventh District, Mr. Cullen. And consideration of a request to approve ARPA funds in the amount of $10,000 for Loudoun Diamond Club from First District, Mr. Randolph and Mr. James. Consideration, now this next thing will be on, will not be on your agenda to approve because you've already done this, but just so that you're aware. There was a request to approve a disbursement to Lenore City for the Public Safety Building that was approved through the committee. There was a consideration of a salary supplement disbursement to eligible law enforcement officers in the Sheriff's Department. This is an additional supplement that is being given to- in the Sheriff's Department, this is an additional supplement that is being given to us by the state, and so it won't be given out until next fiscal year, but we have to approve it to sign the contract to send the due money. And then we go into amendments, now there are many amendments, so I won't go over all of them.
Oh, please do.
Please don't, it's law.
But you will have all of the spreadsheets, now, in the County General Fund, I will tell you at the end, I'll tell you this much, because this is very important.
Very important.
There was an adjustment to revenues and some adjustments to expenses, but these amendments will be adding one point, a little more than one point seven million dollars back into the County General Fund, okay? So, yeah, yeah.
Not bad for a budget category.
Not bad at all, is it?
But I'm happy to answer any questions once you look at the spreadsheets, if you want to just give me a call. There are amendments in the library funds, which will reduce their fund balance by seventy-four hundred dollars, but that's in individual libraries for their operating expenses. In convenience centers, there are multiple amendments also, but it is adding sixty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars back into Fund One Sixteen, which is the convenience center. We're adding another hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and eighty-four dollars into the opioid funds.
We haven't spent any of that yet, have we?
No, that makes it nine hundred and eighty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Hey Bill, Green County, Green County.
Are they still intending to give us a little more guidance as far specifically about the money?
There is a contact, it's called a smart initiative through UT that we can contact and get more information, so hopefully they'll be able to help guide us on what we're allowed to spend the money on and what we're not allowed to spend the money on, okay? All right, in the ARPA funds, it includes the amendments for the items that I said previously, but you're also adding another thirty-four thousand dollars in from interest that you're gonna have to spend, just so that you're aware. In the highway funds, multiple amendments again, but it is being reduced by forty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. A lot of this is insurance, but anyways, if you have questions, just give me a call.
Is that thirty-four thousand dollars in interest, will it be distributed by ten? Or who gets that thirty-four thousand? I don't think the mayor's getting squat. You're left out, you got five million.
You know what, maybe I'll decide where it's gonna be spent. Okay, in Fund One Forty-One, there's no adjustment to the fund balance, there was a slight adjustment within the revenue, which is general purpose school, and Fund One Forty-Three, which is schools cafeteria, I don't, there was no adjustment to their fund balance, there's probably just movement for end of the year stuff. In general capital projects, there was some adjustment in here, the big thing in here was the appropriation for the courthouse, which is being reimbursed by the insurance, which was like thirty-seven million dollars.
Didn't work this time, did it? Didn't work this time, did it?
Be nice, okay, and then in education capital projects, Fund One Seventy-Seven, there was some reduction in AFT, just money that they weren't gonna use, and some recognition of some revenue that was coming in in interest, not in interest, in AFT, just some additional revenue that automatically comes in, and also there's a setup for the new sub-fund that they will have next fiscal year as long as the budget passes as proposed, and that's all, I believe that's all of it.
The opioid fund, does that have to be used for certain things? I mean, could it be used-
Extremely certain.
As a donation to this new healthcare facility, couldn't?
We really don't know, it has to be opioid-related.
Like talking about Green County, Green County, they said, "We're gonna send a couple of it up to Sheriff's Department," they bought cruisers and-
They paid off their-
Paid off jail debt.
Well, what they said was, and that's why we keep on Green County, they said, "We've been footing the bill for this opioid problem for years now, it's cost us this, this, the Sheriff's Department, this and that and the other," so they just went and took it and just spent it how they wanted to. It's up in the air whether or not that's gonna stand up legally.
That got, that got, that got their attention, they're supposed to.
What we can do, we don't know yet.
So I guess, you know, they're, they're needing money for their health facility, and it's gonna, it's gonna be about health and nurses and all of that.
If somebody would say we could use it for that, I would support that tomorrow, but until we know what we can, if we spend it incorrectly, somebody will come back wanting back, kinda like Telco building PPP.
Be something to look into then, that would be a way that we could help them.
One portion of the money is very restrictive, you have to use it based on the abatement, the abatement council says, and based on the handouts that have been given multiple times, it's not real, real clear, the settlement money is a little bit less restrictive, but that's the portion that's being appropriated in the next fiscal year, we'll just see if that's actually allowed.
It'll be kinda like the ARPA moment at first start, there'll be three or four people mess up, then they'll finally come out, but final, final, final venue that's under change.
And I'm sorry, I said that was all, but the Capital Projects Committee also recommended these things, I apologize. So thirty-five thousand dollars for a minivan at the senior center, evidently this is to replace an existing van. Twenty-five thousand dollars at the county office building for new cameras, twenty-five hundred dollars for painting in the conference room in the ag department, and seven thousand two hundred and eight dollars for circuit concessions for a vault for wheels, and that's not the wheels you drive.
W-I-L-L.
That's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to, I hope everybody knows what a big deal that is, but that one point seven back in, that's how many years of-
Well, there's been quite a few years that-
That's another huge step, and everybody, everybody's working on.
Called very fiscally conservative money management. Giggle, it's, it's what's there, it's the money's there.
And actually, I don't know how many people know this, and I'm not gonna try and embarrass you, but six out of the seven audit, clean audits have all happened under this mayor.
I'd say we're done.
No further, I'll consider the meeting adjourned.
Wait a minute, what about public comments?
We had them.
Not for the workshop.
We sure did.
No, you didn't. I signed up, I signed up to speak.
They crossed you off the list when you spoke the first time.
Well, I didn't, I wanted to speak at both.
Well, you signed up once.
No, I signed up twice, you gonna let me speak? I thought I signed up twice, I spoke about the budget only during public comment, I didn't speak about the schools, other than, you know, I was going to talk about it, but you didn't bring public comment again.
I thought I did, I followed what was on the list, so.
Are you gonna let us speak? We're talking about two separate meetings. You're my commissioner, you know, he worked for me. No, he works himself. You get paid, you get paid by the taxpayer to listen to us, for one thing.
They signed up twice.
If they signed up, let them speak.
You wanna get up and make your last pitch, go ahead.
Five minutes.
You got five minutes.
I don't take five minutes if you signed up.
She signed up twice, let her speak, five minutes.
You know who I am. I didn't know Dr. Hunt and his group were gonna speak, but I really support that endeavor, I'm a retired healthcare provider, it's very much needed, and I would have liked to see the ARPA money, or perhaps the budget not include like almost doubling the legal fees for something more worthwhile, and something that's gonna be needed by all of us living in Loudoun County. Okay, the other things I wanted to say, and you confuse me with your agenda, I got the agenda off the website, and then you go and you change everything, so, so I don't know what kinda order you're gonna go in, I don't know that it even helps if the agenda out there if you don't stick to it. Mayor, your, these are my comments, your presentation about the veterans, your changes that you wanna make, I support veterans as much as possible, I come from a military family, and that would include suggesting you only hire veterans for the Veterans Service Office. Chairman Cullen, you had the change to support the military employees, I also support that. As far as the schools, having watched Mr. Darren's presentation twice, and after reviewing all available documentation, I find no solid rationale for this project or the increase in the property tax, although I have been told that the commissioner that started all of this with the school and everything else, was hard to have said that he didn't care if Pat Hunter or any constituents don't want it, that's going through. So you all voting are gonna be responsible, and there is such a thing called term limits, thank you.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I believe I was the only person that spoke about all of the budget items, and I thought that we would have another opportunity since there were two separate agendas or two separate meetings, that really shouldn't have been held on the same day, and I will have a legal opinion to share with you at the next meeting. What concerns me about this project is that there has been no feasibility study, and at the very least, I think we should look at that. I'm very concerned about Greenback, you're going to spend money on athletic event, athletic features, but I would like to address the fact that back in twenty thirteen fourteen, when you had a new school, a lot of the growth classrooms were cut out, and that concerns me. To me, it's about academics and the children's future, rather than playing football, sorry Coach, but-
That's all right.
That is important to me, that we think about those classrooms that were taken out, and now they should be added back in, that's my opinion. The other thing that concerns me is that no one asked about the traffic study, and the architect has been dodging the answers to that, and we need to know how that traffic is gonna work, and also, almost every school has this nightmare of traffic, and we wanna eliminate that, and he hasn't addressed that, the fact that we're gonna have an annual operating budget of nearly a million dollars, that hasn't been addressed. The fact that the PowerPoint presentations have not been put, or the presentation has not been put on the school board website or the county website, please sell this to the community if you think it's important, but hiding it, it just sends the wrong message that this information isn't readily available to us, and I've been to two, you know, to the village twice, but I'm with Commissioner Coella, I mean, it should have been held here, this is the county seat, and it should have come before the school, your county commission during the budget review, and it didn't, and that was very disappointing. So, you know, that's, that's basically what I'm saying, we need to address growth at the Loudoun Elementary, we have four pre-Ks, we're going to build four classrooms, we have pre-K only if we have the space, I think our priorities are a little bit skewed, thank you.
Who are you?
Who are you?
What do you wanna talk about? You weren't on the list, fully on you.
I wasn't on the list, but something-
Or a journalist, you even talk on, you won't, you're not on the list.
I stopped them in First District School Board member. Actually, what I wanna talk about is the opiate money that we got, I did kinda hear the whole thing, and I'm sure there's gonna be some stipulations behind it, but being a law enforcement and happen to daily, almost daily administer Narcan to these young people, I think if you're gonna use that money in any way, you need to get with our district attorney and our judges and find out and get these kids in rehab, not to rehab where they're here, but let's get them away from, that's the biggest problems you find with families that deal with this, this issue, is they don't have the money, insurance doesn't cover it, and these kids are, and I say kids, but it's older adults, but obviously mostly kids, that are, you know, they're killing themselves, and you know, the best thing to do if you're gonna use that money in any way, is let's get them, let's get them in rehab, if you can, I don't know what the stipulation-
Well, I've had multiple conversations with District Attorney Johnson, and like I said, once the final rule comes down, and I've talked to, I think most commissioners about it, coming together and finding a way, and I think they're gonna be invaluable.
Yeah, I think, I think they were telling you the good candidates, I mean, I know that sounds mean or inhumane about good candidates, but you know, some folks don't want them, some folks do, and you know, and I've seen people beg for help, you know, after you get them Narcan, and then, you know, ten minutes later you have to Narcan them again, and it's, it's a, I mean, it's killing these kids, and so if you got the opportunity with the money, that's what I think you need to do with it is to, is try to get them in rehab.
Well, I agree with you, I've had enough of the winter dressing slogans, just say no and stuff, you know, we need prevention, we need interdiction, we need treatment, that's the three things that, that need to come out of this money, not balloons and t-shirts and hats.
Correct, right, exactly, thank you, sorry about that.
Now, here we go?
Yes.